Chris Preby, I represent Booming Skyline, the operator of the quarry. We're on the north side of the road for this one, right?
Yeah.
Basically, it's an old quarry that's been there a really long time. If you driven by it, it used to have water in it. It was not, they're not below the water table. They have a structure that they were kind of blocking it off. And that was to hinder people from entering the quarry that weren't supposed to be in it. The water was only about a foot deep. So they've drained that now. So just to kind of show that it doesn't impound water. They were doing it intentionally. So ultimately, it's a future planning. On the south side of the road where they're operating right now, they currently have about two years of rock left. And they're just planning for their future. Once they're done there, they're going to move back across the road where they were mining initially. So that's the plan.
So are they running out of rock or are they running out of real estate?
Real estate and rock.
Okay.
With what's currently permitted, there's about two acres left where they're encroaching. The hearing after this is to kind of finish off that side of the road. We actually applied for that about three months ago after they bought it. But we, there was a title issue in the transfer. So they got that cleared up. Now that's why that one's after this one. So the intent is to finish up all on the south side of the road. They're not expanding in capacity. They're just, they're planning in the future for this north side of the road because it's a limited time left down there till they run out of rock. So like I said, about two years left without expanding the south side of the road. Once they expand the south side, it's only about five to seven years total. And then they're going to be moving to this north side of the road, which is what we're asking for tonight. And that gives them time to kind of clear up, strip, and get ready to move across the road within the next five to seven years. So that's what we're here for.
Doesn't make any difference, but that quarry in the early 1950s was used. I went to school in Spring Grove in Harris where they crashed was the north side.
Yeah. Yeah, that quarry is older there than the south side quarry.
Well.
Any questions from the planning commission, Mr. Preby?
Well, the issue, there was an issue at one time with the property owner on the north side that got resolved, correct?
Well, he raised some concerns, yes.
But that's not a problem.
Duh. I think he did cite that he felt there was some land ownership issues there. But in review with our county surveyor, they don't believe that to be an issue. He does not own that.
Outside of that, he had no issues?
He did, just based on the fact that it's going to be really close to his site there. That letter is, should be in your packet.
I would note that the quarry was there before that trailer house. And I included in the application, that trailer house is there on a CUP, acknowledging that they're within that setback and that they would not hinder any expansion of the quarry in the future. And then the meeting minutes from the township meeting, he basically stated the same thing. And it's assigned to the property, not to that specific owner. So that's why as they expanded to the south, they never, they never had that issue. You know, the setback was kind of irrelevant to that trailer because he kind of signed that away when they developed that property. Acknowledged, basically, that the, that he didn't have an issue with the quarry because the quarry was there before they were moving that mobile home there.
The full document's in your packet, but just that portion of it's on the bottom of page four.
Yeah.
From 1976?
Yep.
I did talk to your county attorney and she felt that that was still a valid document.
That was recorded?
Yep. It's a, that mobile home is there on his CUP number 46 in the county. So that was, he had a conditional use to put that dwelling there because the quarry was already there.
Do we have any other questions? I think that's it. Yeah. Go to public comment. Yeah, that's fine. Do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you gotten hold of Jason Strike's land?
Can you please come forward?
If you want to come forward and say your name and speak into the microphone, please.
Gary Booksengard. My brothers and I own my mom's farm. Just wondering if he's gotten ahold of Jason Strike's land? And if they move to the north side of the highway and they start dynamiting and it screws up our well, what's the alternative there? I mean, it's, they've been dynamiting for many years and it hasn't bothered it yet. But if you go to the north side, you're going to be a lot closer.
Is that covered in the condition, letter from 76? Are you referring to Jason's property?
No, I'm referring to our property.
Okay.
Leland, Gary, and William Booksengard Farm. I have no problem with them coming on the north side and taking rock and stuff like that. It's just, I'm worried about our well, that's all. What kind of provisions would they have on that?
When they dynamite, they have to have, I'm not defending anybody. I'm just merely making a point here. They have to have a licensed dynamiter, whatever their.
We could have Chris address that when he comes back up.
Yeah.
We could have G Cube address that.
Okay.
But I thought, go ahead.
Yeah, so the blasting is done by a licensed contractor. There are regulations in place and they notify the homeowner. And this quarry is not below the water table. The intent would not, it's 27 feet. The wall's 27 feet. So it's the same as across the road. It's the rock, when you get below that, the rock is soft. So when they blast, they only drill down to that 20, to the, where they're taking. They don't shoot the rock below that. So they're not going to affect the water table. We don't have any wells within any setback. But they will be notifying the neighbors within that blasting range. They're required to do that. So, and they monitor, they put seismic monitors to make sure there's nothing.
I think what his concern was that if something would happen to the well, is he on his own? I think that's what I.
Yeah, and I don't know which well or how far away it is. It's not within 1,000 feet.
The whole house shakes when you have them dynamiting.
Yeah, so he's, he's the one up in here.
Yeah, so he's 1,300 feet from any expansion of the well. The setback's 1,000.
And you have seismic graphs?
Yep, he would definitely be the one to get notified.
Okay.
And I guess I'd just like to mention, because this was a concern that was raised, is maybe, I don't know if this happened, apparently there was a blast recently, but you, per other, and what's being proposed here to is notification to all those neighbors within 3,000 feet. So I'd just like to highlight that again.
Yeah, either Olson's or Bennett explosives. And we'll be moving east, further away all the time.
Yeah, further away from the dwelling that's there.
Oh, okay.
Close to Box and Guards, but now it's way to the east.
So the current face of the wall would be going to the east, not to the northwest. They're not proposing going north at all. It's going east away from that property.
Realize that it's going east, but even so, I mean, the whole house is shaking. Even when you've been dining on the south side, the house is shaking. And if our well goes, gets caved in, what our problem is? If, if, if there's damage done to your well, the blasters that we hire have insurance to cover that. So if you have a problem with your well, you'll have to contact us.
And plus, plus you'll have seismic graphs at his location.
Right, we set up a seismic graph every time we shoot.
Yep. So you can, that'll tell you if, how bad or.
Exactly.
Yep. And you've, you've had seismic graphs for all the previous blasts too. For, you've had seismic graphs for previous blasts.
Yeah.
That all, they measure that every time?
They have to every time.
They have to. It's in the blast report or something for township.
Yes.
That always meets.
It's documented.
So is there a limit on the seismic graph then? If it doesn't go above a certain amount, then they're not liable or what?
If they're within the code, I mean, I think that you're talking attorney talk here. I think if you think that their blast caused an error or failed your well.
We can even give you a reading of the seismic graph. That's fine. Is there a limit on the seismic? If it's two and blow, it's not okay, or it's okay. But if it's, seismic graph reads five and our well caves in, we're out of luck. That I guess would be between the blaster and you. We don't, we hire all of our blasting done.
They have regulations that they have to follow. I don't have those numbers in front of you to, to tell you what those numbers are. But that's why they test when they blast to make sure they're within their regulations. If they were out of that, they would have to report and that their blasting caused something beyond what they're allowed to do. They're professionals. They do this every day. That's what they do. That's why Booming doesn't do it. They hire it out so that they don't.
It isn't like from years ago, blasting. Is you shoot them in series, you know, where they shoot a whole row at one time? You know, like now, it's like one hole, the milliseconds in between each hole. It's like a rumble, not a blast. It's very well controlled. They, both of those companies shoot in cities, you know, where there's houses on either side.
Do we have any other public comment? Any other questions from the planning commission?
Ready to do the findings?
Yeah, I think we're going to do the findings.
Okay. We do have one that's not applicable, what somebody liked to motion. 13?
13. So your motion to strike 13, just 13, in the findings?
Down motion? I'll second it. Home favor? All opposed?
All right, so number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. The staff analysis states that the importance of aggregate to the community for use in construction, road maintenance, and other uses is recognized in the county's values, which guide the comprehensive land use plan. Further, the transportation goal is to maintain a transportation system which complements land use development and policies throughout the county. The materials produced by the quarry contribute to the achievement of these goals. Would you like roll call or to voice vote?
Do we want a roll call or do we want all?
My suggestion is if there's a problem with one of them, let's speak up for a roll call. Otherwise, I would say just, all right, that's just my opinion.
I agree. Home favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. The staff analysis states that the applicant identifies that aggregate as a material source used in many local, public, and private projects. The underpass north quarry has, or, okay, so the underpass south quarry has limited supply left and this permit will allow them to prepare this quarry so it's operational when that time comes.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Analysis states that excavations are proposed above the water table and there are no water features located within the area to be covered by this permit. Stormwater will be contained within the quarry floor and runoff from adjacent properties will not be permitted to flow into the quarry. And no chemical storage is proposed beyond gasoline and diesel fuel.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Analysis states that the stormwater will be contained within the quarry floor and berm's will prevent any offsite water from entering the site. The applicant will need to secure and maintain a construction stormwater permit from the MPCA.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Analysis states that the overburden will be stripped and stockpiled for reclamation, but the site is an existing rock quarry, so has known quality aggregate resources.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Number six, that pollution, potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis states that no hazardous materials except gasoline and diesel fuel will be stored on site. Portable toilets will be utilized and serviced by licensed companies and licensed blasting contractors will be utilized and will follow standard operating procedures to reduce dust control. An NPDES permit will be required from the MPCA prior to any activity on site.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Just, I wanted to say something on that. So that's including the seismic graphs for that? Or is that going to be under a recommendation or?
Seismic graphs are part of the blasting regulation.
Okay.
It's not, yeah, it, it wouldn't be a quarry operation thing. It's an operation of the blaster to do that.
Right.
You could put that as a condition that.
Condition.
But they automatically. They're regulated federally to do that.
Right, right, yep.
Yeah, I believe it's under, number eight, under the conditions, if you.
That's what I was getting at.
So number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. And staff analysis states that the site is accessed from state 44 and also has a second emergency access.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states that there is adequate parking for all employees, equipment, and truck loading within the quarry.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Number nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Analysis states that this quarry is proposed to begin after the depletion of resources at the south quarry. And it is expected that overall traffic and impacts will not differ greatly from the existing operation just relocated.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Number 10, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis states that current conditions require notice to residents prior to blasting. This proposal may greatly impact the dwelling immediately south of the project area. However, a previous landowner permitted that structure realizing those potential impacts. This should not impact surrounding agricultural land and the other dwellings within the vicinity are setback enough that dust and vibration should be limited. This proposal will not differ greatly from the existing operation.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried.
Number 11, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that the surrounding property is a mixture of tillable and timber with some pasture. There are few residences in this area and historically, mineral extraction has been a prevalent land use at this location.
Favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Number 12, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis states that operators will follow noise and dust mitigation methods as identified for operations at the underpass south quarry.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried.
13 was not applicable. And 14, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than, than the intensity of the surrounding uses or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Analysis states that this proposal is a request to expand the physical boundary and location of the operation, but is not increasing the intensity of the current operation.
Home favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Number 15, that the site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Analysis states that the area has been heavily used for mineral extraction historically due to quality resources and proximity to paved roads. There is one landowner and dwelling that will likely experience major impacts, but the general public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare should be minimally impacted.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I make a motion to accept the findings.
Second it.
I'll second it.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
So we have a number of different, of conditions. Would you like me to read them all? They're, can become our standard.
Yeah, I see number eight, there's the seismic graph's going to be used, yep. Hours of operation, that's the normal.
Issues are basically outlining what the ordinance says they can do.
Right.
They're not pushing anything beyond what the ordinance.
You're following the ordinance.
Yes.
You're following the ordinance and all that?
Yep.
And they're the same that are on the quarries to the south? I guess just for the, because they are lengthy, I'm, we can introduce them as, as written or I can read, typically I will read them all. But just because there's a lot of them, I am looking for what you guys would prefer. Have you read them?
I've read them.
Okay.
Number five is the financial assurance, that's going to be posted, yep. I think all the conditions look good to me.
Aye.
Okay. So the motion would be to recommend to the Houston County Board approval of the conditional use permit to expand a quarry for mineral extraction with, with the 10 conditions as proposed.
Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Home favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Starting over?
So yeah, this will go to board next week.
This will go next week, Amelia, is that what you said?
Yep.
Okay.
Please take notice that an application has been made by G Cube on behalf of G and K Development and, from Decor Iowa for a conditional use permit to expand a quarry for mineral, mineral extraction in the Agricultural Protection District in Spring Grove Township. On the following premises, parcel 130255, said applicant standing and making application is as the owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioner's Room in Caledonia at 6:25 PM on Thursday, July 31st, 2025. All persons having an interest in the matter may attend the hearing or submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. And comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department or emailed to myself and must be received by Tuesday of July 22nd, 2025 to be included for review prior to the hearing. All comments are considered part of the public record and that was advertised on July 16th of 2025.
Okay, so this is an existing permit. This is, this quarry was initially one of those grandfathered unpermitted quarries. And then when you guys redid your ordinance, it was greater than 40 acres. So we split it into CUP 417 and 418. So it's really got two CUPs just for this quarry. For, the one that we're expanding is the limits of the historic quarry prior to any zoning ordinance. But we're expanding it northeast to kind of finish out that project because that's what rocks left. The CUP 417 that, that is south of this, they've, the rock has, has got a little too much overburden and it shrunk. The face is down to like 10 feet. So by the time they take their overburden, there's just not enough rock left to continue that direction. So they're, they're getting to their limits to the east and they, they're within 100 feet of their northeast boundary of where they can go without expanding this permit. So this is a two to five-year plan to finish out this side of the road. That's where they're at. It's the same source. It's, it's the rock that they've been taking this last year. It's just they're, they're heading, they're finishing out this side of the road, so.
I think just a couple of years ago, you guys eliminated that bound, that.
The boundary between the sand quarry and the rock quarry. And the, that boundary was, I mean, they, they drove across to use the same scale forever. It was just a matter of, Booming ended up buying this from Roveroots. So then they owned both sides of the, instead of owning one pit and leasing one, they, they own the whole property now. So that, that's why we got rid of that 50-foot setback between the two quarries. Because what would happen is you would have had a wall, you know, 50-foot on this side. If you had a 100-foot wall in between two quarries. And since they owned both sides, it didn't really make sense to leave that wall there. Just, so they're going to, they're going to knock that out. They are working on that now and then continue to the northeast, which is what we're proposing here. I think the total for the quarry, we're expanding 11 acres, 11.3 acres, and it was 25.25 acres. Ultimately, it stays under your 40 acres for the zoning requirement.
How many years are left in that?
This whole south side of the road is five to seven years max.
Okay, with this addition.
With this addition.
Okay.
They're not excavating the entire 11 either. As you go east in this, it slopes off.
It slopes off.
Yeah, so, but we're including it because to stockpile or to use waste material, that's part of the quarry operation. So we wanted to encompass that whole area. So we, you know, we can take the, the overburden and we can place it there before reclamation. We can't do that if it's not within the quarry boundary because you can't stockpile outside of the quarry limits. So it's, we're really not expanding the excavation. It's about seven acres that we're expanding the excavation. It's just we're including everything that they own there just so that they have the freedom to stockpile over there and be within their limits.
They can use that for reclamation afterwards.
That's the point, is to push it there for reclamation.
Can you also kind of explain, there is some concern about some of that potentially running off into neighboring properties because the drainage does go through there?
Right, so.
Explain how you would manage that?
Well, I can, anything we excavate wouldn't run into the neighbors because we're down, you know, we're at the high point pushing it that direction. So any sort of contact, like quarry contact, would drain back into the pit. Anything that would run to the neighbors would stay vegetated. They're not going to strip it unless they're going to place stockpiles on it. If they place stockpiles on it, they'd use best management practices for erosion. We, they would seed any sort of stockpile that's complete so that way they don't get runoff that direction. So there will.
That's in your construction stormwater?
Yes, there's, there's no, in this quarry, because the face is 20, well, it's about 35 feet high, there's 27 feet of rock. As you push that, it can't, the water can't jump 27 feet to go down into that ravine. So they're, they're working towards that ravine. So there'd be no construction quarry runoff from this site to the northeast. And ultimately, when it's done, there won't be either because there'll be a rock face there. So there'd be, there'd be a vegetated berm around where they're going to work and that will prevent water from running from the quarry to the neighbor and any of their stockpiles.
Yeah, and like, I think there's a farm pond.
And it shows on, yeah, so if you go to the map where it's the yellow line that says proposed rock face, the point would be to have the berm along there. So that way, anything to the east of it stays vegetated. Anything from the west of it would not drain to the east. And ultimately, when it's done, sure, Minnatt would be happy, but they're going to close down one of the accesses permanently and they just have a gated access instead of on the north. Kind of control any sort of people.
You're not going to be using that old access. I mean. You're not gonna be using that old access, I mean, that's to the east, right?
Correct.
You're gonna be using your original one.
The main access is the one they'll keep, yes.
Yep.
Yep, close the other one.
Yep.
You're saying to the old farm site?
Yes.
Yeah, that won't be access, there'll be fifty feet and then you're gonna drop thirty feet, so yeah, that that'll get taken out.
Right.
Yep.
What is the process, there's an old well in that location?
They'll have to seal the well properly.
Seal it?
Yep, with Minnesota Department of Health, same with the septic system, they'll have to abandon it and
They'll
Arm sites abandoned, but the septic in the well would have to be abandoned properly.
Grouded, yep.
Yep, and that that by the time they get to where that septic is, it's gonna be, well, it's been abandoned for a while, but it'll be over a year before they get in the digging end.
Any else have any questions? More public comment, do we have any public comment on this? Anybody?
Bypass fifteen or thirteen again?
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion then. I'll second.
Strike thirteen. Okay.
Um Is there a vote on that?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, so number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Uh, staff analysis states that the importance of aggregate to the community for use in construction, road maintenance and other uses is recognized in the county's values, which guide the comprehensive land use plan. The materials produced by the quarry contribute to the achievement of these goals.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates the need for the proposed use, staff analysis states that the applicant identifies the aggregate as a mineral source used in many local public and private projects.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county, analysis states that there are no water features located within the area to be covered by this permit, and stormwater will be contained within the quarry floor and runoff from adjacent properties will not be permitted to flow into the quarry. No chemical storage is proposed beyond gasoline and diesel fuel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff, analysis states that stormwater will be contained within the quarry floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use, analysis states that there is a silt loam overburden, but the site is an existing rock quarry, so has known quality aggregate resources.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Uh, number six, that the potential pollution has hazards have been addressed and the standards have been met, analysis states that no hazardous materials except gasoline and diesel fuel will be stored on site, portable toilets will be utilized and serviced by licensed companies, and licensed blasting contractors will be utilized and will follow standard operating procedures to reduce dust control.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Number seven, that adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided, analysis states that the site is accessed from state forty-four and also has a second emergency access. Since this is an existing quarry, all other facilities are currently in place.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states that all parking is contained within the quarry and there is adequate parking for for employees, equipment, parking, and truck loading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. The twenty twenty application indicated an average of twenty-eight to forty-five trips per day, and since this is only an expansion in the physical area, there is no anticipated change from that current operation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Number ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis states that the operation itself will not change, and even as the quarry moves east, it will still be set back eighteen hundred feet from the closest dwelling. Current conditions require notice to residents prior to blasting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that the surrounding property is a mixture of tillable and timber with some pasture, there are few residences in this area, and historically mineral extraction has been a prevalent land use in this location.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Number twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis states that operators will continue to follow noise and dust mitigation methods as previously previously identified.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Um, thirteen is not applicable, and fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Uh, analysis states that this proposal is a request to expand the physical boundary and is not increasing the intensity of the current operation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And fifteen, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Analysis states that the site has operated for many years with no known impacts to the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and the applicant is not proposing a change in operation, just boundary, and therefore will be a continuation of current practices.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry, approved.
So the recommendation recommended motion here would be um a motion to recommend to the Houston County Board approve a conditional use permit to expand a quarry for mineral extraction in the Agricultural Protection District with the ten conditions in Spring Grove Township. Um, those are the same conditions as uh
Previous.
As a previous hearing.
Yep.
I will state, or I did find though, a number ten, I have excavation shall not occur below depth of twelve hundred feet, and that should be twelve forty, actually.
I think that was a typo from the the original CUP when we did it, because they're above twelve forty.
Okay.
I think it was a typo from eight years ago when they
Oh.
They actually permitted it.
Okay.
It's it's twelve forty.
Okay. I got looking at the other side and it's like, there's no way they're that different.
Well, the condition from that was seven, or that elevation, but we're at the
Okay.
So what's the correct number?
Twelve, one thousand two hundred and forty.
All right.
Instead of eighteen hundred?
Instead of twelve hundred.
All.
All right.
Sorry, was there a motion or any question on that?
Make a motion with that amendment.
For all the conditions.
All that?
Yeah.
Is there, yeah.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, got a little late.
All right.
I need some coffee.
What?
Need some coffee.
Some of you guys are familiar, that drops off right there, so we're not going beyond just that piece.
You're staying on the high side there, yep.
I actually opened up that quarry for Charlie Rilbers. Oh, I don't know, about fifty, forty years ago, I worked there for twenty-five years.
Yep.
Had a good run, so.
Yep.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please take notice that an application has been made by Patrick Alina on behalf of Mathy Construction Company for an interim use permit for a temporary bituminous plant in the Agricultural Protection District in Mayville Township on the following premises, it's section sixteen, township one oh two, range five, and it's parcel zero nine zero one six four zero zero zero. Said applicant standing and making application is as fee owner of said described lands, and a hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioner's Room in Caledonia at six forty-five P M on Thursday, July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, all persons having an interest in the matter may attend the hearing or submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application, and comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department or emailed to myself, and must be received by Tuesday, July twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five to be included for review prior to the hearing. All comments are considered public record, and this was advertised on July sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. So Patrick's not here, but we have Sam Costigan.
Yep, I'm Sam Costigan with Mathy Construction, um and we're promote proposing an interim use permit to place a portable asphalt plant at the on County Road thirty-two, um specifically to do the Casatu project, the county project ice into New Alvin, so, and then we have some other projects to do with that in town here, um but
So you gotta get you gotta get this thing going now?
We do, we do, we, yeah, we'd like to put it in in two weeks, so, yep, but yep, uh, we've been in this in this spot before, sat here before, haven't had problems, um, so, we've got the one hundred-foot buffer for D N R that we've complied with, that came about a couple of years ago, but other than that, um, we plan to sit there for three to four weeks coming up here at the end of uh end of August into September.
Yeah, for those of you that are newer, so they ju, it was just twenty twenty-two when they last reviewed this one, and with it was the first time I'd been in there since Shoreland rules had been updated, and so then they had to go through um a conditional use permit at that time, and that's what he's referencing there, so that holds now, um, and so now all they need is this interim use permit.
Sounds good.
You're doing the one from Aitzen to to Alvin, are you got that one?
Correct, yep, Cool Hill Drive, yep, yep.
So this is good for a year, right, if we were to approve this?
Yeah, the ordinance allows twelve months at max.
Yep, so
So it'll come, yeah, if you can get in there early.
They wanted to set up in the spring again or something, they could.
Yep.
Okay.
Good till this date.
Yep. Well, it would be Tuesday, actually. Assuming it's approved.
Anything else?
Not really.
Hardly repetitive, yeah.
Yeah, we've done this before, um, we're we're held to the M P C A permits for plant and the quarry, so, all that stuff, yep.
Any more questions? Good, we'll go to a public comment for this. Do we have any public comment? Okay.
Um, bypass five and thirteen?
Make a motion to strike number five.
Five and thirteen, yep, got a motion, do we got a second?
I'll second it.
Are we all in favor of that one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
All right, so findings, number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Analysis states that one of the guiding values of the land use plan is to encourage continued priority of maintenance improvement of road segments to support the economic vitality of the county and region, further the transportation goals to maintain a transportation system which complements land use development and land use policies through the county which this project supports.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Two, that the applicant demonstrates the need for the proposed use, uh, analysis states that a scheduled project on County Highway two requires a temporary asphalt plant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county, analysis states that standard precautions required by state and federal law will be followed as an added measure, operators receive specialized training for spill response.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff, um, analysis states that this should not impact quantity of water runoff and M P C A discharge standards are required to be met per their M P D S permit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Um, five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the, uh, never mind, five's not applicable. Um, six, that the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis states that the spill prevention, control, countermeasure plan is in place and maintained by educated and competent employees, applicable air quality standards are met as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis states that proposed routes avoid township roads and city streets which can be damaged by heavy traffic.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states that there is adequate space within the quarry footprint and outside of floodplain for this use.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nine, that at that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Analysis states that the past projects increased tra, for past projects, increased traffic loading on all routes utilized was not projected to impact traffic a significant amount. This will be a short-term operation, and the haul routes identified make use of the most robust road race possible.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Number ten, that the interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Uh, excuse me, the analysis states that the nearest dwelling is approximately two thousand nine hundred feet away, adjacent properties are quarries, woodland, and cropland. This temporary facility should not have an impact greater than the operating quarry in which it was housed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
Eleven, that the establishment of the interim use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that the predominant use in the area is agricultural cropland and the nearby rock quarry which is not anticipated to be affected. In addition, this temporary facility should not have an impact greater than the operating quarry in which it will be housed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Number twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Um, analysis states that applicant identifies intent to reduce asphalt odor with odor suppressant and control fugitive dust with water. The proposed measures mitigate potential nuisances to the extent practical and are adequate given the relatively isolated location of the site.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thirteen's not applicable, so fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Analysis states that this temporary facility should not have an impact greater than the operating quarry in which it will be housed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry.
And fifteen, that the site specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Analysis states that the proposed location is appropriate due to distances to neighboring dwellings and Analysis states that the proposed location is appropriate due to distances to neighboring dwellings and presence within an existing quarry. The spill prevention, control, countermeasure plan mitigates unforeseen threats to public health, safety, morals, and general welfare to the extent practical, and the proposed hall routes result in minimum wear on public road infrastructure, thus protecting the general welfare. Additionally, the applicant's previous work in the county has been conducted as presented and without incident.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Make a motion that we accept the binding.
Second, John's here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Carry.
Um, so the recommended motion here is to recommend to the Houston County Board approve an interim use permit for a temporary bituminous plant in the Egg Protection District with four conditions in Mayville Township. The first two are the standard, the permit shall comply with all federal, state, local laws and regulations. And the second is the county manter onto the premises at reasonable time and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all of their applicable statutes, rules, and ordinances. Three is runoff from the plant footprint shall be in accordance with M P C A discharge limits, and four, permit, is the permit expiration shall be twelve months from the date of issuance.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, conditions.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll go to, to the board on Tuesday, Sam.
Oh, that's. One, right? You guys can come up while she reads it.
Uh, Sam Castigan?
Wait till she reads her, no, you can sit down.
Okay, okay.
She'll read it.
All right. So please take notice that an application has been made by Seth Brown and Dorian Keenan of seventeen nine eighty, state sixteen, in Houston for an interim use permit to operate a cannabis microbusiness in the Egg Agricultural Protection District in Houston Township on the following premises. It's par, it's section thirty-one, township one oh four, range six, parcel zero six, zero two, zero five, zero, zero, one. And said applicant standing and making application is as fee owner said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioner's Room in Caledonia at seven oh five P M. on Thursday, July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. All persons having an interest in the matter may attend the hearing or submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. And comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department or emailed to myself. It must be received by Tuesday, July twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-five to be included for review prior to the hearing. All comments are considered public record, and this was advertised on July sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. I guess I can preface this a little bit because this is also a brand-new proposal. So these guys are the first ones coming forward to seek an interim use permit. So they're following two different ordinances. You guys recently adopted some updates to our zoning ordinances that included all these different cannabis business types within, or just, I think it was cannabis, cannabis businesses in general within our zoning districts. And then they also fall under the cannabis ordinance which was adopted at the end of last year based on the state opening up a cannabis industry. And so, um, said they're looking to do primary cultivation, primarily cultivation, and, um, which is, uh, required in the egg district.
Hello, guys.
All right, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. My name is Dorian, and this is my business partner Seth, and we're here on behalf of Green Hub in regard of our application for our cannabis microbusiness license in Houston County. We are social equity applicants because of my time in the Air Force. To provide some brief context for our plans, our microbusiness will focus solely on cultivation, like she mentioned, of cannabis with a secure and state-compliant greenhouse facility. We will not engage in retail activities, but will dedicate our efforts to responsible and high-quality farming. The greenhouses will be equipped with robust security systems, including third-party monitor cameras and a secure perimeter, perimeter fence ensuring compliance with local regulations and prioritizing safety and accountability at all times. Our goal is to operate transparently, following the best practices for security and environmental, and to be a trusted partner to the county in this new industry develops.
And then if I could just add a little bit to go into a little more depth on how we're gonna be secure with like the greenhouses and stuff too. So essentially what it would be is like a half little thing on the outside as an airlock, and that would be like a buffer, so if you break into that before you still get to anything that's worth something, you gotta break in again. And then it'll be funneled from least valuable on the outside to the most valuable on the inside. So essentially to get to something that would be worth your while to steal, you would have to break through like three different locks, and so that would also take the time, extend it out. So then the cops can get there and, as well, gives more time. As a, a buffer, the safety, you know, we don't, we don't want anyone breaking in there and stealing anything either. You know, know how happy anyone would be if someone broke in, stole a tractor out of their shed. It's the same type of thing with us. And then that, another reason why we wanted to go to the greenhouse, because I know we originally planned to go just to grow, but the greenhouse is another way for security, and then we can also, um, on all the exhaust vents, we'll put carbon fiber filters, and so that will knock down the scents and a lot of stuff, because I know there's gonna be concerns in the community about that smell, I mean, some people are okay with it, some people don't. Best to just err on the side of caution for everyone, um, and go there. You know, we're pretty easygoing people, it's, if you, if there's something that you would like, or there's something you're concerned about, just, I mean, call us, talk to us, whatever you guys want, however works best. We're not here to trick anyone or do anything like that, we just wanna be open, honest people and hope for the best.
Well, exhaust, the exhaust part, I get that, because that's, you're gonna have prevailing east winds there, or westerly winds, so that's gonna go into, towards Houston, the city.
Yep. Yep, and that's.
That's a concern.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why we wanted to do the carbon fiber and all that, and the state doesn't require that on the greenhouses, but it's just, I think, common courtesy, it's not that hard to do. It's just literally adding a filter, two exhaust vents are already there. And then, yeah, we can, and there's different qualities to each, get the best one. And then also, so our greenhouses themselves, I know there might have been a concern about possibly seeing through it from the road, but there's actually, how you can fix that is there's specific types that's more opaque, so you can't see through it. And then you put a double layer on that, and so you, as long as you put one layer on the outside, one on the inside, that pretty much knocks it down, um, it's slightly less efficient, but again, better to err on the side of caution for everyone involved, we don't want any of the unwanted attention either.
So there's carbon filter, then the neighbors, uh, wouldn't have much of an odor then?
Uh, no, with the carbon fiber filters, if we're at harvest and the next guy is spraying manure, you'll smell the manure.
Won't you need water there too?
Um, so our, our plan for water is mostly rain collection, because believe it or not, cannabis is actually a lot less water-intensive than alfalfa even.
So it's. So how are you gonna do the rain collection?
Uh, it would.
Ruffs or?
Yeah, it would, it'll slope off, and then there'll just be a little.
You're gonna collect it off the roof then?
Yeah, it'll just run right off the cl, rain, off, rain, it'll run right off the roof, and then we'll have little sliders on the bottom that'll just collect it, and it'll run into a bin.
Is the county okay with putting a, a building up in a floodplain?
Yes, so they had contacted me, um, prior to even purchasing the property to see if that was an option. And, uh, we had discussed at that point that there is a very limited building envelope there, and the building envelope is all within floodplain, so we had conversations with the D N R. And they were, um, and that particular area did happen to be just outside of delineated area, um, which would require then that, um, that they would have had to have hired somebody to figure that out, but the D N R reviewed that and um, was comfortable making the call for flood fringe. And so then at that point, that does allow them to do a structure and elevate it on fill, or they can build it at the current elevation, but they would have to let, allow for basically water to move through it. And so that was discussed all prior to them purchasing the property. We did talk about that on site and wondered if greenhouses were any different. And I apologize, because I just got an answer today on that. And if it is a rigid wall greenhouse, um, then those same standards apply, but soft-sided ones, they do not. Um, and then there are some size limits too, so you might have to play with that six hundred, it's just a little bit under that, so. Um, it doesn't sound like, I mean, just depending upon what your final proposal is, we'll, might have to talk through some of those requirements, but it's not a total limit to the project, and then since this is flood fringe, uh, there is no restriction on the fencing in there either. Considered flood fringe, there's no restriction on the fencing.
What do you mean by that?
So in floodways, uh, you can't do like a chain-link fence because it will hold debris and then back up water. And so that was one of my questions, um, because originally it was being proposed as a, a forest ran barbed wire, I think. And when it got changed to, uh, more the woven wire, then I guess I just wanted to double-check that that wasn't going to be an issue being in this floodplain, but there is no restriction if it's flood fringe.
So we, if we could require a chain-link fence, would be not a problem, is what you're saying?
Yeah, from the floodplain perspective.
Okay. Because it is, it, it's in the hundred-year floodplain the way it looks here, but there's, the D N R's calling that fringe.
Yeah, so what it's mapped is, well, that's just showing general floodplain. And there is a cross-section, actually like right there, and everything east of there is all delineated because it's Houston, uh, the city of Houston. And then this one just happened, it actually comes down from the west side of that cross-section, and so that's why that area was not delineated. But yes, they're calling that fringe, that was a very long response to your question.
See, the water stops at the bridge, and then it flows back upward, up again, up, upward. I've watched it already, you know?
So I think, yeah, so I think she was calling it break, was it breakout flow? Or backwater flow or something, so that would make sense.
But it'll get right up to the highway. Water well when it floods.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if it was that high though, every house around would be gone too.
I'll ask Grant, there he wrecked one of his tractors driving through the water to get off.
His tractor got covered one year.
So it gets high.
But he's still there.
Goes under the highway there.
You wanna do a public comment and then come back? Yeah, does anybody have any more questions for them, or should we go to public?
I got a question, just curious, what's your guys' background in growing cannabis? I mean, you didn't wake up yesterday and go, hey, let's go grow it, or I'll put a bunch of money into this, I mean, I mean, somebody taught you, I mean, you've got some sort of education, or I, I don't, you know, we're not growing ditch weed here, so.
Right. You know? Yeah, um, I mean, we have, um, we have a guy that we've been working with in the cities as he's been, yeah, he's been working with us and helping us out. So he, he'll be a part of it, um, in terms of the knowledge and the final expertise. To say that we've grown it before would be a lie and illegal. So, um, we're, we're not in the business of breaking the law, that's, I mean, if we wanted to do it the wrong way, we wouldn't be here. So, um, but yeah, I mean, we're not, you know, we're not professionals by any means in terms of growing, but I mean, we've been on, I mean, it's been, the law's been in place for over two years now. And so we've been working all night in the backgrounds on that, just, I mean, refreshing your knowledge, picking up on things, and going with it, um.
You gonna buy a special seed for this?
Um, so originally, the first time around, we'll have to go seed because clones won't be ready. But after the original time of seeds, by the next grow, the market'll be ready and we'll be able to get clones. And so then we'll go from clones.
So your original plan was to build a permanent structure, now you're just gonna go to greenhouses?
Um, the permanent would be like a long-term plan, and then they would be in the same, it would be in the same spot as the greenhouses, but I'm.
The one that we got confirmed, that smaller area, we would plan on getting that eventually for long-term, but as of now, we just wanna do greenhouses.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we'd have to come back for a different permit to do the building of the structure itself anyways, right?
A building permit.
A building permit, yeah, this is for, you know, this is the interim use permit, this is to do.
Yes.
This, basically.
You were talking about the security, three different types of security. The fence you have there now, what is that for, just to, to mark the perimeter of the site?
Yeah, it's, the fence is not close to done yet, it's, it's gonna get a lot better, more reinforcements and different things in it, the, the fence was just there originally to mark out what's the area.
Well, in my opinion, a security fence would be a high chain-link fence with gates on, locked gates.
Yeah, yep.
Is that what you're planning on putting in there?
Yes, yeah, there's definitely gonna be locked gates and security, um.
Say ten-foot high or whatever?
Um, yeah, I believe it's six right now, but if you, we can go higher, that's, that's okay, that's not that difficult.
In my opinion, just looking at, it's not a security fence, which you have yet.
Yet, yes.
How come you didn't buy the house across the road?
Hmm?
How come you didn't buy the house across the road?
Justin's sister wouldn't sell it to us.
Really? They've been trying to sell that for years.
Oh, really?
My sister bought it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any more questions for these guys, or should we go to public comments? Maybe we'll go to public comment, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did have the two that were submitted, and I think they were here earlier, but didn't stick it out. That were submitted this time around. Oops, I'm out, I can't throw it back yet. It's on page eighteen and nineteen. But if anybody wants to come forward or comment, if you could come forward, just, just to catch you on the recording, and then also put your name on the sign-in sheet.
I guess I'd like Gary's comments first, though.
Um.
Hey, you can read the comments that are written in here.
Yeah, they're short enough, so, um, the first one was an email from Gary Wilson, and it just said, "This email strongly opposes interim use permit application for a cannabis microbusiness less than a mile from my home. The applicant has already started constructing what I assume will be a fence, and having a cannabis patch right next to Highway sixteen is only inviting trouble regardless of any combination of fencing and cameras installed for security, and I respectfully request that the commissioners deny this application." Um, and the second one came from Anita Wilson, and she, um, stated, "In regard to the interim use permit being considered on July thirty-first, I have these thoughts. I think it will likely draw unwanted attention affecting the peace and safety of our rural neighborhood. Several children live in the area, and there is a daycare home not far away. Growing cannabis so close to Highway sixteen is inviting trouble even with a fence and whatever else they may use for security, and I respectfully request that the commissioners deny the application." And I guess I'd just add that there is a daycare home, but it is outside of the five-hundred-foot requirement.
I should note too that Sally Wilson wasn't notified of this. Because I went and talked to her, and she hadn't heard a thing about it.
Okay, I'd have to.
She lives closer than Gary.
Letters were mailed, right?
Yeah.
So she would have had one mailed to her then?
I'd have to look, but if she's, yeah, she's closer than he is and she was likely on the list.
She still live there? But she did find out about it, you talked to her? She lived with Greg?
Well, uh, so my name's Grant Olson, I live right next door. And to me, it started out as just an outdoor grow, now it's greenhouses that I'm guessing they're gonna need permits for too. I beg to differ on the flood plain, this water does come through there. And the only place they, nor- normally, when you do this kind of stuff, you have, uh, a plan sites or site plans, and it shows setbacks, elevations and all that stuff, I'm not seeing anything here tonight on that kind of stuff. These greenhouses, to me, would be in the flood plain, I've seen water go right through that area and go through the culverts across sixteen. Um, oh seven was a big one. Now they want to fill that in, or supposedly, and, uh, put up their greenhouses. If you look on my side, that's high, the highway's high, that's gonna divert water or block it from getting across the roads. I would think more than the DNR should be looking at this, maybe State Highway Department, because they put their culverts in there for a reason. I think you should deny this permit, it's probably the worst possible place this could be, right next to a state highway. The security fence is a joke that they've got there, it's already tipping over some of the posts out of, uh, built out of homesawed lumber, they're not gonna last two, three years. I think you should deny this, it, it shouldn't be there in that small an area. That's my comments, I guess.
So in your estimation, living there, and I've lived in the valley many years, I've seen lots of floods. If that land was filled in, that hole where they want to put the greenhouse, and was brought up to the elevation on your side and on the other side, not the other side of the road, but, uh, property, I guess, east from you, east is Houston, right?
Yeah, east is Houston.
So on the.
But there's not enough.
Level on the west side, your neighbor, and then to the north on your side, if that was all filled in, fill brought in there and brought up level. In my knowledge of floods, um, if you're gonna build a building there, and whether it's a greenhouse or what, you're, you're gonna have to fill it in and then, or, or it's gonna be underwater.
Right.
I mean, you just can't go and put a greenhouse in the elevation that that land is, no, in my opinion. That's just my opinion.
Well, there's a swale there, yeah, there's a, yeah.
If they fill that in, it's high on my fence, highway departments, or the highways definitely higher. Fill that in, that's blocking.
That's blocking water.
Blocking water from either way.
To create, to keep the same hydrology, that's not that hard.
You can what?
Move it from, you strip the wood, or the land from one point to the other, so then the hydrology just laser lower the hy- the hydrology level, it just rotates it slightly.
Hey, you wanna spend all that money?
Hold those three.
There's not enough land there, I don't think decent there to, with the setbacks. It doesn't leave much there. You go e- east of their fence, that's higher, but, but then there, there's not enough room there with setbacks off the highway, state highway and off my property.
I guess I got a series of concerns about this. One thing, look at this map on page four. It's a, a green outlet around this proposed greenhouse, 500 feet, includes your house, Grant.
You got an extra copy of that? I didn't get a packet or whatever.
Includes your farm, your house, buildings, across the road includes their house that Wayne was talking about. Which is not very far in distance. The second thing I really have a concern with, and I voiced this before, since the state allowed this, or voted this in, why isn't USDA involved in it? We raised tobacco years and years and years. We were strictly controlled by the USDA government. If you, we had the same fields year after year, and they came out and measured those fields year after year. And if you were, say, one row off, 10 feet off, five feet off, four feet, whatever, they stayed there until you destroyed it. That's why I just can't see, we're stuck in a limbo here. We gotta make the decisions for something that our government, in my opinion, goofed up on. Big time. I just don't believe in it, um, this is my opinion. And I'm, I'm not afraid to admit it, I'm a farmer. And I think I have my right to voice my opinion as a farmer. I can see Grant's opinion being next door, uh, it being right along the road itself. To my opinion, it's a horrible location. If you had a partial land not visible from the road or off the road someplace, your security fences have got to be really secure. These fences now are nothing, they wouldn't hold a calf in. Being a farmer, I wouldn't put up a fence like that. You can't consider that a security fence. To me, a security fence is a chain link fence 10 feet high, locked gates, like you see around private property, private businesses. I could go on and on, but this is some of my opinions. I can see Grant's opinion living next to it.
This is the first I've seen this green buffer strip, what does this mean?
Uh, I just wanted to send them under the caption, just it's a 500 foot buffer.
Your point, though, to, um, the USDA isn't regulating, because it's not a federal thing, but the OCM did get set up and we'll, we'll get audited regularly, the state has to come in, approve a site fit, a site and everything before we get the state approval. Cause a- after this, if you guys give us the okay, we, we still have to go to the state and they have to come in, confirm everything's all on the up and up. And then after that, we'll still get audited regularly as well, um, to make sure that they're doing it. And I don't know the exact legislation, but I'm almost confident that includes physical site visits, um, on a regular basis.
Before we go on any further, is there any other public comment that we can, then we can have them come back up?
Yes. There's a setback requirements for certain things, daycares, treatment facilities, schools, that's what this is showing.
Okay. So, uh, another house doesn't matter?
No, there is not one for another house, or for a house.
Do we have any other public comment?
Well, I have a daycare there.
Not registered.
Not registered, but kids are all the time.
You guys come back up then, please? Go through some of that stuff?
So, the comment I made about the fill, that would be a disadvantage to, to fill that in, is that what I heard?
Well, how much fill we talking here, Amelia?
And, fill is allowed in flood fringe.
So how much would fill would they have to do to put their greenhouses on?
I think you mentioned, right?
I think it's a couple feet, yeah.
Have to come up a couple feet times 600, uh, roughly 600 square feet.
See, that's my concern is, the, it's, it's not the business, it's the location of where you guys want to do this. It's a slo- it's a real slim piece of parcel here, right along a major highway. And it's in, to me, that's the flood plain, because I've seen water there and, over the years of all the floods we've had. So, I mean, I'd hate to have you guys start up a business and then get flooded out.
But to some degree, that's our risk, right?
Well, but that's what we are here for, is to mitigate risk.
Yeah, absolutely.
People build on bluffs.
Right.
Cause it could get washed off the hill.
Yep.
And we don't let people build homes in the flood plain. You know, we don't let, we, we don't let businesses be built in the flood plain, and this is a business being built in a flood plain. Now, I get where DNR is saying this is fringe. I, I, I'd find that interesting that they would recall this fringe and that it could be flow through, when they wouldn't let nobody else build a house or anything there for flow through, they, you know, that's a big no-no. But it's just the location of it that's a concern to me. It's, you know, cause you're, you're squeezed to that widest part of the parcel to build on. And according to my measurements here that I've done.
It's the lowest part.
You can only build 30 wide and only 20 feet long before you get, like, have to get a variance. Because it, cause it starts to slim there, you got the setbacks from the right away, from the highway, you got the setbacks from the line fences, from the property owners, 50 feet. So you're really constricted there. I guess what I'm asking is, you guys really want to do that there? I know you, you've bought the property and everything, but, I mean, this, this other sliver here, you can't do much with that.
So, maybe Grant will want to plan it.
My concern, my biggest concern is the flood, because.
Yeah.
I, I, I've lived in the valley.
We don't want you to fail because of a flood.
Um, I ran land down by Houston and, and so I know what the rut can do. And of course, there's a lot of people who know what the rut can do, but, uh, in my, just my opinion, with that low spot in there and we get a big flood, you're in trouble, when we get a flood like we had in 2013, 20, 2007 was a big one, 2013 was bigger. And that's my concern more so, and I know that, like Eric says, you're restricted there, as far as how much you can build on. But even with your greenhouses, you get a, you get one of them big floods and, well, I tell you, you're in a world of hurt, I'm not trying to.
You know, if you were to do it right, you'd buy an old tobacco house or your building. And that would have been perfect for you, that you could dry it and everything and.
So you guys have permission from the DNR to add fill, correct?
Well, the official permission, I guess, comes with a building permit, um, through our office.
The DNR does allow.
But they, yes, we approached them ahead of time.
Review that and come up with plans for that, or?
Yeah, so the biggest part is determining, was determining what type of flood plain it was. And that's where they, they made that call on flood fringe, and then we would put stipulations in place as far as the elevation requirements that they have to meet. And just a quick, if, if two feet of fill is required, that's roughly 45 cubic yards, if I did my quick math right.
Okay. This is when we were out there and did the site visit, you know, where you guys want to put that, it, there's this, it's in a swale. You know, I think it's gonna be more than two feet, you'd have to put in four or five feet, but.
Yeah, until a survey is done, establish that, you really don't know for sure.
Well, if you're gonna go to a level, like I said before, to the west, I'll bet you that swale is five, six feet, isn't it, from the? That's what I was getting at, if you build it up to the ground level, then maybe you're pushing the water onto Grant. I don't know that, I, I don't know that, but I, I know you're gonna be in trouble. You put greenhouse there without fill, and I, I agree, I don't think two feet's gonna, gonna do much in there.
What, what does the zoning ordinance allow for excavation in a flood plain?
If it's permitted, you are allowed to do it in flood fringe.
It's 500 cubic yards in a flood plain, they'd have to get a.
A conditional, yeah.
Conditional use permit to move 500 yards.
Yeah, yeah, and what he's referencing is not tied to a building permit. Um, I guess, so what they're doing is, since it's being reviewed as part of a building permit, that's also permitting the excavation of material or addition of fill.
Can I ask a question? Um, Lisa Oscar, I own property across the road. What is the grow area that you need to have? This is to them, what is your grow area?
In terms of square footage?
Yeah. How big is it gonna be?
There are 10 by 20 greenhouses, and I think we have three of them that we asked for, so it's 200 and, yeah, it's 600 square feet total.
Yeah, you're limited to what, a half an acre, is it?
Uh, outdoor, we can do half an acre.
Outdoors, half an acre?
Yep, the gre- the greenhouses are.
5,000 square feet can't be?
Yeah, which we'll not even come close to.
Right.
So, can you clarify, what we're actually trying to grant is just permission to grow, we don't really, like buildings and stuff, we really don't have anything to do with that right now.
Correct, you're, you're looking at the use, and, and the use of the business.
And does that have anything to do with them having greenhouses, or, or is it just growing in general?
Um, I guess I would say yes, because that's what they're, they're proposing to do, uh, grow inside of a structure of some sort. So I think it's fair to say that.
Greenhouses are.
Under your purview?
Aluminum frame or, or?
Uh, yeah, they'll, they'll be metal frames, yeah.
Okay, and then they're like a perforated plastic or, or like a.
It, it's a.
Corrugated plastic?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's not corrugated, it's a special type of greenhouse plastic, it's, it's.
Wondering how fast I can break into it.
Well, yeah, no, I understand.
You got three barriers, it doesn't take much when you got three crazy kids going after it, you know? What are they gonna use to get in there, I mean, chainsaw, how fast can I get in there?
Right, um.
I mean, they cut tires with the chainsaws, this plastic sounds easy.
Yeah, yep, and I mean, that's why we would, we're gonna do the third party for the cameras and everything, because they'll be right on that, they'll have 24/7 monitoring and surveillance and everything. And so even if the cameras were like us watching, and we're sleeping for eight hours a day, whereas they're doing it 24/7, so if there's issues with that, they would also be liable for.
And that, this, I don't know, how, how close are you guys in proximity as far as where you live to where this site is? I mean, it's gonna be an hour before you get there?
No, it's, it's about half hour, I, we live in La Crosse.
Okay, I, I didn't know.
Legit concern, yep.
And I guess I, you probably know this, but how many staff does Houston City have on their police department?
One in there, like, you got two, no.
And, and I mean, we have rural, our deputies could be on the other side of the county. So, and we maybe have, I don't know how many on duty at a time.
Well, the, the cameras, the cameras are required by OCM, right?
I, yeah.
Yep.
That'll be, that'll be. That'll be, that'll be a state requirement, because you'll, you'll have to go to the state and get your.
Correct.
All your stuff here too. You need to get our local approval first, and then go to the state.
Yep. And after all this, the state can come in still and say, yeah, they were right with these concerns, no, no.
Well, you know. For security, being along a major highway. I, you know, I'd like to see, I agree with Larry, I'd like to see a chain link.
Yeah, absolutely, we would be more than willing to.
Fence with a, with, with a gated entrance for the driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're more than willing to work with you guys and see, do what needs to be done, you know, we're, like I said to start, we're not out here to pull one under on someone, we're just trying to be good, honest businessmen. Which, in this industry, I can see why there's some skepticism on that.
Well, it's new.
Yeah, yep. And, you know, it, to some degree, we're just as new to this process as you guys are, so we're kinda trying to learn together.
So, my, this, my, my question is for Amelia. Does this planning commission have the authority to demand a chain link fence with angled barbed wires, three or four? I'm just throwing number eight foot high. Then do we have the authority to say they have to, uh? Do we have the authority to say you have to put in so many feet of fill, et cetera, et cetera, or don't we have that authority as a planning commission to put those stipulations in?
You, yes, you can do that as, as far as the fencing. The fill.
That would be part of the building.
Yeah, it's gonna be part of the building permits, that'd be kinda redundant, and I guess without unders- having an understanding of exactly what the elevations are out there. I mean, other than you guys probably first, have the firsthand knowledge of potentially how much they would need, but I guess I I don't wanna just throw out an arbitrary number here tonight either.
How deep, Grant?
Yeah.
Was your tractor in the water when it quit? How deep was your tractor in the water when it quit, cause you were on the driveway for that?
I was sitting in the seafills in my lab.
That tells you how high, and his driveway is higher than the rest of it, you know? This is the funny part about this, the water comes from Houston up toward there. You know, it doesn't make any sense.
No salmon come out of water, Greg.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That all that water come out of?
I've sat and watched. Yeah.
But all the structures are still there from that, right? All the structures made it through? Okay.
We just don't want you to fail. That's half of this right now.
No, yeah, and we, we understand that, and I, I get, we don't wanna fail either, I guess, obviously. I guess we're just, we're just asking for the chance.
Me, again, they're talking about. Greenhouses. Tears, can't have them break in. You're only putting up, what you said, three ten by twenties. How are you gonna have any room left for a row in there? You got all these.
Ten by twenties, not very big, is it?
To me, that don't make sense either.
The fence goes on the outside. I'm, I'm confused by the question, I think.
Yeah.
While you're talking about. Locked doors. Few doors to get in.
Right. Yes, yep.
To me, you're kinda talking on both sides. That's good. Not building that big a building yet.
Better to be safe than sorry, I would, that's what I would say to that, I guess.
Well, do we have any more questions for these guys? So, did the DNR take into account the Highway sixteen culvert there? That's a, like a, is that like a, is there a floe agesment there or anything that you know of?
That I don't know.
As you can see right here, where, on the hundred year flood plain map, in the five hundred year flood plain map. There's a pipe right there in that highway. To equalize, I'm sure the, you know, if it's on the other side of the road, you know, to equalize it, but. I don't know, I just, I look at this map and you guys are right in the middle of that hundred year. And the, and the thin part of the parcel is not, but it's too. It's not big enough, so it's, you're limited with, uh, to build anything there, or do anything there.
And that's back there, out of it, is what we originally wanted to do for just the outdoor, but then we heard the concerns about smell and different things like that, so that's why we shifted to the greenhouses. But the greenhouses can't be back there because of the setbacks, so that's why it moved up. So, it's. Yeah, a horse apiece kind of at this point.
Read the findings?
All their public comments?
Do you have any to strike?
So, we have, yeah, thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen? Motion to strike thirteen, fourteen?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye. All hosed. Okay.
Number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Analysis states that the goals of the land use plan balance economic development and agriculture. This particular proposal will retain the agricultural use of the property and also promote diversified economic development as encouraged in the plan. Would you guys like to do roll call?
Do we wanna roll call? It's your call, you're chairman. Roll call, roll call's fine.
Do we need to roll call? Uh, Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Larry Goustead.
Yeah.
John Glasspool.
Yeah.
Uh, Franklin Hahn.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
And Chase Munson.
Yes.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Analysis states that the applicant has received preapproval from OCM and now needs to secure a location and local government unit approval. Larry Goustead.
Uh, yes.
Uh, John Glasspool.
Yes.
Franklin Hahn.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Chase Munson.
Yes.
And Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Uh, analysis states that all wastewater will be treated per MPCA standards and organic fertilizers and and integrated pest management will be utilized to reduce environmental impacts. John Glasspool.
Yes.
Franklin Hahn.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
Chase Munson.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
And Larry Goustead.
Yes.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Uh, analysis states that this proposal, which is agricultural in nature, will not greatly alter the existing site conditions, and rainwater will be collected for use on site. Franklin Hahn.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Quantity. Define that, what do you mean by, is runoff from what?
Just leaving the site in general, I think.
Yes.
Chase Munson.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Larry Goustead.
Yes.
And John Glasspool. Five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Analysis states that soils are sandy loam and silt loam, and both are suited for crops and building sites. Eric?
Yes.
Uh, Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Franklin.
Uh, I have a question on that, because they're not gonna be using the soil, he says, said you got it adequate. But they're not gonna be using that if they have greenhouses. You're not gonna be digging up the soil because it's low enough now, you're gonna have to use, bring soil in there for your elevated shelves or whatever, right?
Yeah, we could bring some in, we could strip a little off the top of the high part as well, or a mixture of combination.
It says soils are sandy loam, silt loam, both are suited for crops and building sites, that's what it says.
Yes.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Um, six, that the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and the standards have been met. Uh, analysis states that future septic systems must meet state requirements, otherwise applicants have proposed an organic operation to reduce environmental concerns with pesticide use, et cetera. Uh, Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yeah.
John? And Franklin.
Yes.
Seven, the adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis states that this is a vacant parcel, but the location along trunk Highway sixteen will make it accessible for utility hookups. And this will, but, those will be at the expense of the landowner. Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
John? And Franklin?
No, I gotta vote no on that because it's not drainage. Cause you got a low spot in there.
And Eric?
Yeah, I agree with Franklin on the drainage part. No.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states that the application identifies there will be two employees and this site will have adequate space to accommodate the parking and loading needs for this use. Um, Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Chase?
Yes.
Nine, that the facilities are propos- provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or ha- traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Analysis states that this location will not be serving the general public, and with minimal traffic each day by employees, only there should be no hazard or congestion as a result of the use.
Got a question on that. It's not just gonna be you guys and the employees that are gonna be using this, it's gonna be transport too, right?
Yes.
Be haul, there's gonna be license haulers hauling out of there?
Yes, sir. Yes, um, that would only be at harvest time though, so it'd be at most three times a year.
Three times a year?
Yes.
Alright.
And how many trips per day, I guess?
Um, it, it would, it would, it, it comes just like a money van, like, you know, the big armored money trucks? That's what comes, so it would, it would all go out in one shipment.
Armored?
Yes, yep.
Larry?
Oh, okay, was it?
Oh, I, I couldn't.
I didn't vote, so.
Oh, yeah, so you're on the last one, so.
Yes.
Wait, that was nine, right? Or was I leading off with him?
Right, it was nine.
Everybody, okay. Um, so you're, Eric, yes, uh, Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yeah.
John? And Franklin?
Yes.
Ten, that the interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis states that adjacent properties include tillable acreage and farm dwellings. While certain aspects of the operation may result in a temporary nuisance to neighbors, it should not cause damage or harm to neighboring properties. And the planning commission may wish to review the order from flowering plants similarly to farm operations such as manure agitating and hauling. Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
You wanna explain, explain that a little bit more, will not be injurious to use or enjoyment to other property.
As far as what the finding is asking for, or something within my assessment, the finding?
I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. Uh, John?
Yes.
Franklin?
I'm gonna vote no on that for the simple reason is, I don't know how we can gauge what that order will be uh, comparing it to manure. That's my reasoning.
And Eric?
I'll vote yes, but there's gonna be conditions that I wanna add to that.
Uh, so number ten, that the establishment of interim use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement to surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that the predominant use in the area is agricultural, and this use is consistent with those operations, nor will impede, impede other development. Uh, Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
John? Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Chase?
Yes.
Uh, number twelve, the adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis states that the applicant has identified there will be no signs at this location. After the initial setup, there should be no dust, fumes, noise, or vibrations, and odor and light are the greatest nuisances with these operations. And the applicants have identified options for mitigating those concerns, such as scenting cover crops and equipping buildings with carbon filters as required by state rules. And so I guess this one wasn't updated to reflect the greenhouses, um, so we can make some modifications there if you guys would like. Or you can just prove it too.
Well, you could, we could add carbon filtration. You wanna elaborate on the other things that you're gonna grow to mask the scent?
Uh, yeah, so it's like, it's like lavender and different things like that, you, you just plant like a border. And then it, it smells good.
Yeah.
And so it helps, if there's leftovers, it helps knock that down and mask the smell.
On the border of the, where it's growing, or a border of the property?
It, it would, border of the property.
And you are still doing that, then?
Yes, that would come in.
We could, that'll be, we could add that as a condition, I think, too.
Uh, so Larry.
It might be a state condition too, isn't it? Or maybe not, I don't know.
I'm not familiar enough to comment on that one, honestly.
The carbon filters are a state?
Um, if you are doing, so like for an actual building, the carbon fibers would be. But for a greenhouse, they haven't made the, they haven't refined the legislation. Um, so, that's.
So, we can, that is added, or we can add that? Can we add that? We could add that, I would say. Could we? I think it would be a good.
Yep. I think it would be good.
With them on different.
Yep.
That's not a problem. Yeah.
We can add those.
Yeah.
We can add those.
You're talking as a condition at the end, or within this?
We'll, we'll do that as a condition, just make a note of it, that we'll.
Yep.
Put that on as a condition.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yep.
And Larry?
Yep.
So, thirteen, uh, I'm guessing is not applicable. Fourteen's not applicable, so fifteen, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And in order to operate, the applicants will have to, analysis states that in order to operate, the applicants will have to receive final approval from the Office of Cannabis Management. And that approval will confirm they have met all state requirements intended to mitigate concerns related to public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes, I just find it interesting they got morals in there, I mean. That's just general language, isn't it?
Yeah, and I think it comes from statute, actually. Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm lost.
Findings? Or approve?
Motion to approve them? I have a motion to approve them. Like a motion to approve the findings. A motion?
A motion? You have a second?
I'll second it.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry.
So right now we just have the two standard conditions included, that they have to comply with federal, state, local laws and regulations. And that the county can enter. You have additional items?
The masking of the lavender and, what's the other one?
The carbon fi- uh, the carbon filter.
Carbon filters, yeah. So is it just lavender? I thought there was something else that you could plant too, but it's just lavender?
No, there's, there's more that, honestly, that was just the first one that came to my mind.
Right, there's another one, I thought I saw it in the packet here, but.
Calan, calendula?
What's that, John? Oh, yeah.
They're free, boys.
Yep.
Is that a proven fact and that will mask the odors? The lavender, the carbon filters?
I actually.
Has it been proven?
That, um, is a really common practice in states that have already done it. Um, and the carbon fiber is, the reason they do that is the carbon fiber is a reason that they mandate it is for the odor control. So according to the state, whether you can believe them or not, I guess that's up to you, um, they believe that it does. Um, and the, the lavender and different things themselves aren't going to necessarily, you know, take down the scent that's already out there. But they'll smell good to help mask it if there's any leftover.
Does lavender, basil, the calan? I don't know what that is.
Chamomile, maybe?
No, calendula?
Calendula and basil.
Mask the scent during flowering stage.
Well, I'd say use, I'd say all three of those on their, what they re- uh, recommend.
Be allowed.
Yep.
You have to plant and maintain them and stay alive too, you can't.
Yeah, they gotta be working, they gotta be alive, they can't be.
We're holding to it in February, but.
Plant and maintain?
Plant and maintain.
Three, those three, you want to leave, okay.
Plant and maintain lavender, calendula and basil to mask the scent.
So you guys are going to grow year round?
Um, so in the winter, it would not, it would scale back significantly because it's just too, the elements are too prohibitive to actually run a full thing. So you shrink it down to basically like one, and then the ones on the outside are acting as airlocks and heat protection.
Carbon filters?
Yeah, we got that, right?
Require that on?
It's required.
Require them on the greenhouses?
And then a chain link fence around the premises?
What, the height?
Eight, ten feet?
Eight should be high enough, I would think.
Eight foot with the, uh, two barbs on top, whatever, you know.
And angled irons or whatever you call it.
Angled barbs on top.
How many basketball players on Houston's team? Won't be a lot of people jumping eight.
No.
Um, would you want that around the entire property or around, um, a section of it?
Anything you're growing in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it cover the, cover the grow area, so it'd be in that wide area.
Yeah, so the fence right now, rip it out, put a big, put a normal or a better one in, normal.
Yeah, you couldn't plant it in the right of way, right? I mean.
Right, yeah.
Install it in the right of way. And then a gated, a lock gated. I would say it would all be encompassing, the gate would go in with the fence.
Yep, okay.
I would suggest you find a professional to do this. Chain link fence isn't that easy to build.
Yes, sir.
I've done it, it's not that easy.
So we can hire you?
No. We've got enough money.
It was also mentioned about raising the area. We don't have the authority to say that, though. But you couldn't put the chain link fence up if you had to raise area first.
Right, um, and I mean, the fence doesn't have to be elevated, but that, that's part of the, the prop, the issue is just figuring out the logistics of thing, of when you're going to haul and fill and stuff. If that's required.
The ground, it's got to go eight feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That work?
Yep.
Oh, that's a.
So like now for the building permit, they have to come, they'll have to come, will have to come to the planning commission to get a building permit?
No.
They can do that through you? Yeah.
I thought that's where you were going with that, Larry, like as far as fill. If you just want to like reiterate, flood plain requirements must be, um, followed as the building permit dictates, but that's also kind of redundant.
All state, federal.
So we don't have anything to say the way I understand about how much fill to go in there. That's up to planning commission to decide that.
I guess I would require the, the minimum that, of what our ordinance requires. Which, and how we do that is not necessarily telling them a specific yardage. It's based on telling them they have to meet a certain elevation and then, um, they'll have to have somebody come out and set a benchmark for them. And, um, the, then bring in the necessarily fill to, to hit that point. And then afterwards, there's an elevation certificate required to, or a surveyor would come back out and verify that that's been met.
Anything else?
But there is kind of a catch to that fill too, though. You cannot divert water onto your neighbor's property. Like Grant's property, you can't divert water.
Actually, I'd like to see him do that because you know what? When they put the bike trail in, they put a dam below the bike trail. That would be perfect for me to make him take it out.
I don't know that we can recommend that.
That was one of the stipulations with my father's place. Neighbor built a garage and go divert the water to his lawn, which did not pass. And the law was you cannot divert the water onto your neighbor's property.
Yeah, but that's one of the things that they do look at is insurable structures downstream. So, and, and potential impact.
Consider the water is going to come upstream.
Yeah.
It's back, it's going to back in, it's going to back in, yeah. So the D N R is going to work with you on that, right?
Yeah.
Nicole's going to be working with you on this, so. You would, you, could you foresee them doing a stormwater retention pond in this area? If they raise that up there like that? I mean, that's something you'd want to ask.
Yeah.
To mitigate the concerns of runoff. It's something you could ask them.
Be a good way to get the D N R in hot water. Where the bike trail bridges right now, they won't clear that out.
So I guess just to kind of go back, or, sorry, do you have more conditions?
Anything else?
Um, I was just going to go over words, word smithing otherwise. Um, plant and main, so now the third condition would be to plant and maintain lavender, calendula and basil to mask the scent. Um, four would be carbon filters shall be on all greenhouses. Yeah, just on all greenhouses. And five, the perimeter fence around the grow area shall be eight feet high with angled iron or on top with locked gate. Is that how you guys wanted them phrased?
Angled, barbed. Locked, eight foot gate, yep, at the entrance area.
And they only have to maintain one of the three plants, they don't have to maintain them all or plant them all, correct?
Hmm.
They just have to plant one of those three? Plants or?
Oh.
Yeah, they don't have to plant all three of them.
Plants.
One of those.
Okay.
One of the three. Carbon filters on exhaust.
Yep.
What would be the correct way to, uh?
Plant and maintain lavender.
Keep alive, yeah.
Let me know how that goes.
I'm going to have to get a girlfriend.
You might get one.
If I'm always smelling like lavender, I will.
This is going to get really expensive for him then.
Alright.
Well, we need a motion to approve, or we have that?
Question, this would have to all be done before the greenhouses are put up? The fence?
Um, well, they're, they ultimately need, uh, state approval and some of these items will be required in order to achieve that.
But the state will have our conditions and know what our conditions are. So when they study their approval process, they can see what our conditions are and go from there, right?
I can't say they're going to care, but yeah, uh, yes, as part of the zoning compliance check, um, I can, I, I can make note of those.
You're probably true, I mean, they probably don't care what we think because, you know, they have the ultimate authority, so.
This may be a good thing because Grant has a bike trail through on the lower end. And when the contractors came in, they destroyed a bunch of his trees. Give him some clot so he can get the trees back.
Alright.
So you need a motion?
Uh, recommend a motion to the, you guys want to recommend a motion to approve an interim use permit to operate a cannabis micro business in the egg protection district with five conditions? Alright?
You have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Not repeating all that.
Have a second?
I try to stay out of that, but.
Chase, you can second stuff.
Being a commissioner, so.
Well, I'm the chairman. Do we have a second?
Yes, I have a second.
I'll second it. Home favor?
A roll call.
A roll call?
Wayne?
No.
Larry?
No.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Franklin?
No, and the reason that I vote no is the two reasons. I keep saying about the flood and the other reason is we as a board here, or planning commission, uh, we do not have any say on how much fill there's going to be put in that area. That's my concern to vote no.
We could work with you on that, I guess, granted that would be on our system, but more than willing to work on it.
I know, but what we're voting on now is if we're going to approve it or.
You gotta remember when Grant lost his tractor, he was on the driveway and he had water up his ass. You know, that, that tells you how deep it can get there.
And Chase?
Yes.
Got a tie, don't you?
Box, scissors, paper?
Chairman votes to break the tie.
What?
He already voted.
I know he did, but normally a chairman don't vote when you don't have a, when you don't have a odd number on the board.
I think it, tie is a failure.
Boy, you're the chairman, you ought to know that.
Tie is a failed vote.
Shall we revote or will that not?
That should revote. Your vote's failed vote.
The findings said yes.
There's three yeses and three noes.
All the findings passed.
That's why we have a seven-member board, but we only have six today.
I guess ultimately it goes to you guys anyway.
Close to what?
Well, it goes to you guys.
Commissioners?
Yeah.
Well, the commissioners have the right to overrule.
So.
Planning commission because they've done it before.
They can say yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's not them.
But how does that?
You could bring it to the county board.
As a?
As a failed vote.
Failed?
Yep.
Okay.
When's that going to be?
We were planning on Tuesday. Would you like me to look into a couple of these items? I mean, if we don't go Tuesday, it will go.
I just won't be there next Tuesday, that's all, so.
Oh. Um, and that would probably be to your guys' advantage.
I'd wait till Eric says.
Could you, could you push it back to the nineteen?
I say, yeah, is that the next date? The next date would be the nineteenth of August.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Few fellows didn't know it, but I had a son-in-law that.
I make a motion to adjourn. Home favor?
Try this, hold busy.
Aye, aye.
And he failed miserably.
Thanks, guys.